Stated, I know the music parents and the theater parents are just going to be beside themselves because they have been asking for those new bathrooms near the auditorium forever and a day. And so we are working on those and those should be complete before the start of the new year. Equally, our Meadow parents have been exceptionally, exceptionally patient with the playground and the space around the playground. We had some challenges with the cost of that. We went out to bid multiple times, but I'm pleased to let our entire community, including our Meadow community, know that that work has been going on. We're very, very excited about it and that is nearing completion as well. We've been working on replacing all of our fire alarms and doing site work at multiple buildings. I know I shared with the community, but if you did not get that message, I want the community to know that we have a new bus company. I'm sure you all know that Baumann Bus Company went out of business. The district went out to RFP for bus companies and the successful bidder was Guardian Bus Company. They do work with a lot of our neighboring districts, including Oceanside and Freeport, and so the contract was awarded to them. And Dr. Robinson has been working hand in hand with them to make sure that we're ready for September and that the service is going to be what we expect it to be. The last thing on an update is just to let you know that I have shared with the community that we are opening or plan on opening a wellness center at the high school. Because of all of the, because of this pandemic, things have been slow to happen. So it will not open in September, but we are still working toward that achievement of having the wellness center. Date to be determined at this point, but it is still in progress and we are working on it. The last thing from my report is really to talk a little bit about opening in September and where we are. I want to just share first that I met with, through the PTAs, with middle school and high school parents yesterday, I think it was yesterday, maybe it was Monday. And I met with elementary parents today, again through the PTA. If our community, if there's anyone in our community that did not have an opportunity to participate in that, I know the PTAs recorded them and I'm sure we'll make them accessible to our parents. I want to just go back a little bit and share with the community a little bit of history because I think it's important to know. So back in March, we were shut down by the governor with 48 hours' notice. That's, and this is a word I've tried not to use, but that is unprecedented. We were, you know, we were, we were kind of watching the landscape and saw this coming. And so for about a week and a half, we were preparing for this, but in, without knowing it was going to happen. And in 48 hours, we were told that our doors would be closed and that learning would be remote and from home. So the first rumor that I would like to dispel is that schools were not closed. The buildings were closed, but learning went on as learning does go on. People were not laid off. We were mandated by Governor Cuomo not to lay off a single person and we did not lay anybody off. And so, you know, in a, in a new kind of way, life went on. Learning looked different, but it continued for us. About two and a half weeks ago, we were told that the governor was going to issue a statement. He did. He talked about schools reopening. He really kind of, I'm going to call it, punted to the Department of Health. And in the, the two days after that, we were given guidance by New York State Education Department. The guidance document was about 150 pages long and we were given two weeks to come up with a plan to reopen schools. Some might think that, you know, that that's enough time, but I will tell you that we were asked to plan for everything from health and safety to facilities, to learn, teaching and learning, to, to the social emotional well-being of our students, technology, special education, transportation, to every minute detail in a two-week period of time. I will also share with you that I'm unbelievably proud of my team, who worked tirelessly for those two straight weeks, including weekends and evenings to make sure that that plan was done. My many thanks to Mr. Maniella and Dr. Gallo and Dr. Robinson and Mr. Randazzo and Mrs. Young, who worked tirelessly to make sure that not only that the document was done, but it was done with fidelity and it was a reasonable plan. So that plan comes out and in the course of developing that plan in that two-week period, we were meeting with the teachers' union, we were meeting with our other unions, we were meeting with parents. And in one of the conversations with parents, I asked them, you know, what, what they were hearing from other parents in the community. And they shared with me that they thought there were a lot of parents who were apprehensive about their kids coming back to school. I asked them to just share with me, what percentage of parents do you think are apprehensive? And they told me about a third. And I have to be honest, that surprised me. That number sounded really high to me. So at that point, I made the decision that we would do a survey to parents to find out if that number was accurate or not. And when the numbers came back, they were accurate and they were actually even higher for our elementary schools. So, you know, I can do and my team can do what we need to do to open up schools in the way that we believe is the safest way possible. But in the end, as a parent, as a mother, if I am feeling uncomfortable and uneasy, you know, that's not going to sit well. And so at that moment, I decided that we would put out a commitment form to our community and let the parents share in the decision. I think some parents are probably sorry about that at this point because this is not an easy decision to make, but I think it was the right decision. So we put out a commitment form to our community. We asked our parents to decide between two options. At the elementary level, it was either you're all in or you're all out. So you're either all in face-to-face or you're doing remote learning 100% of the time. And at the middle school and high school, the two options were you're either remote or you're in of basically 50%. You're in for five days out of 10. Some have asked, you know, why the option wasn't given to elementary schools on the, on the hybrid model. And so what I want the community to understand is every single decision that was made was based on one line in that guidance. And the line in the guidance said that you must adhere to either six-foot distancing, wearing of masks, or physical barriers. And so the physical barriers is not possible. Wearing masks all day long, all the time, is just not possible. And therefore, we're adhering to a combination, but starting with six-foot distancing. So when we look at our classrooms and we measure out how many students can fit in a classroom at any given time, given six-foot distancing, we were able to come up with a plan at the elementary schools to get 100% of our elementary school students in. That included using the gyms, it includes using cafeterias where we have cafeterias, it includes using the art rooms and the coral rooms and AIS rooms. Every nook and cranny in all of our buildings was going to be used. And so our initial plan had 100% of elementary students coming in, but when we heard that there were parents that were uncomfortable about it, we added the option of the remote learning. So that's why those two options were given at the elementary school. At the secondary schools, there was never a time where we would be able to fit 100% of our students in. There are just too many students and so it's not possible. And so the model for middle school and high school was always going to be a day one, day two, or group one, group two, which is, as you know now, Tuesday, Wednesday, or Thursday, Friday, and alternating Mondays. And when I heard from parents that they were a little uneasy, we added the option of full remote learning. And that's how we ended up with those two options at the elementary school and those two options at the middle and high school. And so the commitment form goes out. The next question that is the most common question that people are asking is, you know, why am I committing for a year? Can I change my mind along the way? And the answer that I've given to the community is this. To the extent possible that we can be flexible, we will absolutely be flexible. But understand that at the high school, there's 1,600 kids. At the middle school, there's 1,100 kids. And across the board in our elementary schools, there are over 3,000 students. And so if at any given time, 10 people change their mind one week and five people change their mind the next week and 20 people change their mind on the third week, you're looking at a constant change of teachers, you're looking at a constant change of physical space. And we may not have the physical space if we have to keep the six-foot distancing. And so to the extent possible, we certainly will accommodate our families. Does a year seem like a long time? A year seems like a long time. Here's what I think, though. At some point this year, is it possible that we go full remote learning for everybody? It is very possible that that's going to happen. Is it possible that maybe in the springtime, we conquer this pandemic and we're all in face-to-face? Honestly, that's my hope. I can't wait to get back to life as normal. And so, you know, is it possible to plan definitely for June? Of course it's not. But from a systems point of view, we have to know basically where we're at between now and June. It's an issue of facilities, it's an issue of personnel. And so that's why we're doing that. But certainly if we're shut down, we're going to shut down. If we're completely opened up, we're going to completely open up. And if we have to shift along the way, because there are outstanding circumstances for individual families, we will do everything in our power to make that happen. But I need the community to understand the constraints that we're under. I also need the community to understand that, you know, this is an issue not only of the health of our kids, it's the health of our kids, it's the health of our adults in the system, and it's the health of the community at large. And so this is a community effort. You know, we can do everything that we can do, but we need our community to be alongside us. We need our community to teach our kids how to wear masks. We need our community to teach our kids how to socially distance and what that feels like. We need our community to really help us enforce the rules that we are being told we must enforce. And so this really is a community banding together for the health and safety of everybody in it. There are some changes along the way that I have gone over with the elementary schools and with the middle and high schools. I want to address the questions that came in today. One of the questions was, will the start times and, start and any times of the day be the same as in the past? The answer to that question is yes for middle school and high school. For elementary school, they will start at 9:10 in the morning. The reason for that is contractually, all elementary teachers get a prep period a day. The prep period is going to be the first period of the day. That allows us to control specials so that, you know, in one school, for example, there are four physical education teachers and we do not want the physical education teachers going from building to building to building. And so this is going to allow us to change the special schedule with the greatest flexibility that we need in order to make sure that we're not cross-contaminating. So elementary schools will start at 9:10. If you are entitled to a bus, you will certainly have access to a bus. We, the, the rule on the buses is that everyone must wear masks on the bus. Everyone must wear masks on the bus. Kids will be sitting in seats. If there's the opportunity of one child in a seat, then one child will sit in the seat alone, but it will fill with 40 kids on a bus. So that is two children to a seat and the bus will load from the back first so that there isn't crossing of kids in between. By the way, all of these details are in our plan and our plan is posted on the website. The other question that I got was, what classes at the high school level will not be able to happen remotely and will only occur in person? The answer to that question is, they, if your child has a schedule, that child will get all of the classes on their schedule. There are, there are obstacles when it comes to certain of our classes. So if a child is in, a child, a young adult is in a technology class that's woodshop, for example, clearly if you're fully remote and you're not in person, it's going to be tough to do any kind of woodshop. We are in the process right now of looking at all of the curricula, making sure that there are adjustments made to all of the curricula. I, I can't impress upon everybody enough that we were given two weeks to do this whole plan. And so while the plan is up and we feel confident in the plan, the details around certain areas like instruction are still being worked out now. I have confidence in our staff, I have confidence in our administrators, I have ultimate confidence in Mr. Maniella. So when it comes to curriculum and instruction, we are having the conversations now. We will be ready for the opening of school. But those conversations are, and those adjustments are happening now. The last two questions that I got, one I've already answered, well, actually I've answered both. Can we switch somewhere in between and the hybrid option at the elementary schools? The last thing that I want to share with the community is that the board will be acting tonight on a change of the calendar for the school year. And the reason for that is so that we can provide additional professional development to our staff on return. The social emotional learning of our kids and our faculty and staff is, is very important to us. And so we will be focusing the beginning of the year on the mental and emotional health and the instructional objectives. And we need some additional time to do that for both our, our faculty, our staff, and our students. And so the board will be acting on that tonight. I guess I would ask the board at this point, if you guys have any questions about any of those things? If not, then we'll move on in the agenda. Annie, Mrs. Duraska?
Yes, just one question or clarification. I know you've used the term live instruction for those that are doing remote. Is it possible you can just talk a little bit, a bit more about that?
Sure. So at the secondary level, we expect that our kids, well, let me rephrase that. The State Education Department has stated very clearly that instruction has to be engaging and interactive and it has to be new learning every day. And so at the secondary level, we are going to do three things. The first is that our teachers will be broadcasting live. So our students will be able to see through Google Meet. They'll be able to see the smart board or the Epson board and they'll be able to hear the teachers. We've ordered lavalier mics for all of our teachers so that it's clear. We have also used for the high school, a product called Canvas, which is an online learning product that's used in colleges mostly, but high schools as well. And we're in the process of bringing that system up. We expect that kids are involved and engaged. And so we are pairing students at the middle school and high school up with a partner so that if a student is in class, they're partnering with a student who is remote on that day, so that group one and group two. Those students, it's not that one is responsible for the other. It's that it's a way for students to process what's happening in the classroom. So, you know, we might be working on projects together. If the teacher is teaching a lesson, a mini lesson, let's say for the first 10 minutes, and then we're into different groups, then I might be working with that student, one who is remote and one who is in person. And that's really going to help our students process the learning that's happening. It's very well documented in educational theory and we need to make sure that our students who are remote on those days have a presence in the classroom and we're going to do that with partners and small groups. So live instruction will take place like that. There will be occasions where it's a flip classroom. So a teacher might do a mini lesson and, and tape it and put it on Canvas at the high school, Google at the middle school. But one of the things that we're being very sensitive about for our students who are going remote is screen fatigue. There is just so long that you can stare at a screen. And I personally don't want our middle school and high school students watching the screen for seven or eight hours a day. And so we're going to make sure that we balance that so that the learning is happening, that the students are engaged, but that they are not just staring at a screen all day long. And certain courses, particularly the elective courses at the middle school and high school, you know, I don't know how you would do, for example, technology, woodshop by a Zoom meeting or, or a Google meeting. So, so we're working out all of those details, but it is not going to be that you're live with your teacher once a week or twice a week. If we're in this situation for the whole year, we expect a year's learning to happen. We will support our faculty and staff to the extent we need to. We're, that's what we're here for. We're here to support them. But we're here for our students as well and we have high expectations for what we need to do. Are we perfect? Not perfect. Do we strive for perfection? Absolutely.
Thank you. And then for the elementary school, live instruction is similar or different?
So for the elementary schools, the students who are remote are going to be paired with a teacher. So they'll, it's all, it'll be a remote classroom and the schedule, the model schedule for that will, is being developed right now by Mr. Maniella, myself, and the elementary principals. So what an elementary day might look like, but we expect guided reading to happen. We expect writer's workshop to happen. We expect, you know, mathematics to happen. In, in most cases, mini lessons and practice. So going into separate rooms, meeting individually with students, meeting with small groups of students. So basically simulating the regular school day, but using technology instead of doing face-to-face.
Anyone else have any questions? Thank you very much, Dr. Kami. The next thing on the agenda is comments and reports from members of the board. Does anyone have something to report or to comment on? I can't see everybody, so yell out if you have something. Okay, I just have some, okay, Mrs. Duraska.
I just want to say thank you again, Dr. Kami, for those. I know you've been sitting on a lot of meetings about reopening schools with the PTA and I participated in a few of them. I know it's a lot of work. I'm actually going through the handbook, I would call it now, that was provided. And it is quite lengthy, but there's a lot of great information there. So, so one, thank you for sitting through a lot of the meetings this week. A lot of great information. I know you guys are all working hard as a team to get us through that endpoint. And that handbook is quite informative. So great job to all that was involved in that. It's something I think everyone should definitely read because this is important. I know a lot of parents have come to me and asked me what my thoughts are, what I'm doing. And everyone's situation at home is very different. So just because I may decide to allow my children to go to school, I don't want people to think that that's what everyone should do. I have some secret that I know about. It's more important to know what your situation as home, at home is, make that right decision. But read that handbook regardless of what your decision is because a lot of work was put into it and it answers a lot of questions.
I want to add also to that, we are coming out with more reader-friendly versions of the most pertinent parts of that. And that's in development right now. Hopefully, definitely by the middle of next week, those will be out and there'll be, an email will go out to parents to let them know and our faculty to let them know. And they'll be posted on, on our website.
Thanks. Mrs. Reed has her hand up.
Okay, can't see her, I'm sorry. Karen?
I just wanted to piggyback on what Ms. Duraska said. As a parent of an incoming high schooler, this is a very difficult decision for me and my husband. And we did make the decision to do the hybrid model. But as Mr. Duraska said, is, there is no magic in why we made the decision. We made the decision based on what we thought was best for our daughter. And hope that everyone will do the same, whether it is to do the remote learning or to do the hybrid model. So, you know, I just wanted parents out there to know that just because I sit on the board, I'm also a parent and it, it was a difficult decision for me to make as well. And so hopefully, you know, I just have confidence in our team that they are doing everything in their poss, in their ability, possible to make sure that our students will receive the instruction that they need and be able to do so in the most safe way possible. So I just wanted to add those comments as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Again, I can't see everybody, so.
No one else is reading?
Okay. I just wanted to bring something up. As most of the community is aware, March 18th was the date scheduled for the vote on the bond referendum known as Innovation 2020. The board voted to cancel that vote due to safety concerns regarding COVID-19. However, all of us, since that time, have been hearing from parents and other community members asking if the vote will still be held. There was a lot of positive energy around the proposed improvements to the district. And we've already done the hard work of publicizing the vote. So there was really a high level of awareness among residents. And as a result, there's been some informal conversation among board members and Dr. Kami that perhaps we should reschedule the vote and let the community decide. I'd like to take a poll of the board members to see, to see how they feel about this and if they think we should go forward. Dr. Kami has proposed that if we do decide to go forward, that the voting should take place on October 1st. So I would just like to ask if, let me just poll you. Sue, Mrs. Coles, I'm sorry. What do you think?
Well, first I would just like to apologize to everybody watching this meeting for this weird black background and situation here. My house is still without power. So I'm, I'm doing this by candlelight. As far as Innovation 2020, I, I feel that there is still a lot of positive energy and excitement around the idea of something like this happening in our community and within our school district. And I am in support of bringing the vote back. And as you had said, Mrs. O'Hagan, letting the community decide.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Coles. Mrs. Reed, do you want to weigh in?
Given what we've experienced with COVID, some of the things that our schools don't have now, like air conditioning and what else did we have in the, in the plan? I can just go, I'm going to just go strictly mostly for the air conditioning. I feel like this is the time that we need to try to at least put it before the community and see what they say. There are other things in this proposal that I think moving forward, given the things that we've been experiencing due to COVID and things that just have kind of come to light as we really kind of have important things that we need to do. We should try to go ahead and go for it. And like, it's like Ms. School said, see what the community has to say. If it's a yes, it's a yes. If it's a no, it's a no. But at least the community will have spoken as to how they want us to proceed.
Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Reed. Mrs. Duraska, what do you think?
I agree with both sentiments. I think that, you know, a lot of work was put into it. So obviously the presentations that were done last school year speak for itself in terms of the air conditioning and in the voice of the community. And, and now is the time more than ever, exactly what Mrs. Reed said. The air conditioning is definitely primary. And along with that, more importantly, putting it out there for us to hear what the community wants out of it. We have nothing to lose. It's the decision of the community and we should allow them to make that decision. But I'm, I'm definitely in support of Innovation 2020.
Thank you. Mr. Smith, do you want to add anything?
I feel much the same way as my fellow trustees, but also too, you know, when we bring up the whole COVID issue, let's hope that COVID is just a blip five years from now. And, you know, if, if we go ahead with Innovation 2020, that's because we care about, you know, the next 10 years, the next 15 years, the next 20 years of our school district. And we want our kids, you know, not my kids, my kids will be gone. But I want, you know, I want Annie's kids to have that great auditorium at the high school. And I want my elementary school friend's kids to, you know, have that great culinary arts program or to get those cafeterias at the elementary schools, you know. That's, that's, I think Innovation 2020 gives us something positive to look at beyond all this. Are we wearing masks? Crap that has to be discussed, but it's just so, you know, it's just so much angst that everybody has. And Innovation 2020 is something that, you know, we can use to look forward to and be optimistic about and help get us through this challenging time. So I say, yeah, let's put it to the community, and let's go for it. And I hope the community votes it up.
Thank you, thank you. And I just want to go on record as saying that I too feel that this is, this is a great opportunity. This was always a great opportunity. And one of the things, in addition to the air conditioning that Mrs. Reed mentioned, part of the Innovation 2020 was both the expansion and the flexibility of space. And in light of the pandemic, and who knows what we will be facing in the future, the opportunity to have space that we can utilize in a variety of ways seems to me to be a real advantage going forward. So I too, I would like to say I publicly support putting it up again and letting the community decide. So, thank you, everybody. We are going to continue with the next item on our agenda, which is special services. The Board of Education approves the recommendation for services of the Committee on Special Education, sub-CESE, 504 Committee and Committee on Preschool Special Education for January, February, March, April, May, June, and July 2020, as detailed in the Thursday mailing. By Mrs. Reed. Seconded by Mrs. Dreska. Because it involves the names of individual students, we do not discuss it in public. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion is carried. There is no home tutoring and special education service report for this month, so we will continue with the business agenda. As board president, I am calling for the consideration of a consent agenda for business items three through 20. I apologize, I apologize. I skipped one and two. Let me go back, and then we'll do that. This item number one, the Board of Education accepts with thanks a donation from the Class of 2020 of an outdoor bench, Class of 2020, to be placed in front of the high school circle adjacent to the Class of 219 bench, as detailed in the Thursday mailing. Moved by Mrs. Reed, seconded by Mr. Smith. Are there any comments or questions? Except thank you.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you.
Class of 2020.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion is carried. The Board of Education accepts with thanks the donation of culinary equipment from Mrs. Susan Halpern to be used by the Culinary Department of Baldwin High School, as detailed in the Thursday mailing.
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Reed. Seconded, I can't see, seconded by?
Mr. Smith.
Mr. Smith, okay. Are there any comments or questions?
Again, just thank you.
Thank you, thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion is carried. Okay, now. As board president, I'm calling for a consideration of a consent agenda for business items three through 20. Are there any items that members would care to withdraw from consideration under the consent agenda for further discussion and a separate vote? Okay, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda, including business items three through 20?
So moved.
Motion by Mrs. Reed, seconded by Mrs. Coles. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Do I have a motion to approve business items three through 20?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Coles.
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Dreska.
Mrs. Reed. Or Mrs. Reed.
Me.
I'm sorry, Mrs. Coles, Mrs. Reed, I'm sorry. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Okay, the use of facilities report is suspended. And the next item, and I'm going to ask Dr. Kami how much of this I read. I assume it goes through the second page?
It just goes to, I think, there for? The bolded print.
Mrs. O'Hagan? Oh, only the bold print?
It's just the bold first paragraph.
Okay. Okay. The Board of Education adopts the following resolution. Resolution of the Baldwin Union Free School District, New York, adopted August 5th, 2020, calling a special district meeting to authorize the expenditure of monies for school purposes and the levy of a tax therefore.
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Dreska.
Seconded.
Seconded by Mr. Smith. Are there any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion is carried. Thank you very much. Okay, the next item is, Dr. Kami referred to the amended school calendar. Board of Education approves the amended one-day school calendar, 2020, 2021, as detailed in the Thursday mailing.
Should that say one page?
It's the calendar.
Yeah, but it says one-day school calendar on thing, what should it say?
A school calendar.
I'm sorry, okay, let me.
One page, should be one page.
Oh, one page, okay.
It's the school calendar.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, we'll change that in the minutes. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Reed. Seconded by Mr. Smith. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carries. Okay, I will read.
Mrs. O'Hagan, is it okay if I, I just want to share the major in that calendar?
Okay.
So the major, there's three changes to the calendar, but the major, and it will be posted to the website tomorrow. An email will go out to all parents with a link to the new, to the new one-page calendar. And the calendar that you receive in the mail, which just went to the printers in your home, will reflect the changes. But just so that you know, the major change in the calendar is that the first four days, September 1st, 2nd, 3rd, and 4th, are now superintendent conference days for staff only. The first day of school for students will be Tuesday, September 8th, which is the day after Labor Day.
Thank you.
Some other changes in the calendar, but that is the major change that I think the community needs to hear.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Okay, does anyone have, I'm sorry, Mrs. Reed?
Mrs. Dreska.
Mrs. Dreska has a question.
Oh, yeah.
Question for you, the bottom talks about the date that we approved it. Do we have to update it or amend that date to today's date, or does it matter? Because on the bottom, it says December 11, 2019 on the calendar. Does that matter, Dr. Kami? We approved December 11, 2019, just so everyone knows that it was approved.
Oh, so that's.
That'll be updated.
Change, we'll put it, we'll change that.
We'll update that as well, okay. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, does anyone have anything under other? Again, I apologize, I can't see everybody's face, so yell out if you have something. Okay, let me just read a couple of upcoming dates. There is a tentative special Board of Education meeting scheduled for the week of August 24th, but the date is to be announced. School will be closed for Labor Day on Monday, September 7th. The first day of school for students is Tuesday, September 8th. And the next regularly scheduled Board of Education meeting will be on Wednesday, September 9th, at 8:00 PM at the district office. May I have a motion to close the meeting?
Can I add, I apologize, just, I just want to add one thing before you close, and that's for the community. That's the, you will get detailed information from your building principals regarding entrances and staggered entrances and what doors you go through, and all of that information. Once we close the survey tomorrow, and then call all the people who didn't respond to the survey, we will, the principals will be working on all of the detailed information, and you will get correspondence from your building principal with all of that information. So I apologize, Mrs. O'Hagan, but I know that's on the, 104 people that are sitting on this call.
Okay. Okay, may I have a meeting to, may I have a motion, please, to end the meeting?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Reed.
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Dreska. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting is closed at 8:55. Thank you. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.